Okay. Good morning. I would like to call this meeting of April 8th, 2025.
La pasión en progreso. Buen día. Me gustaría convocar esta reunión.
Yeah, sorry. The... Yep, we're gonna mute the sound in the back. You wanna try one more time?
Good morning. I am calling this meeting of April 8th, 2025 to order. Welcome, everyone, to the Napa County Board of Supervisors meeting. I would like to invite Cheryl Bratton to leave us, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Do the thot at the United States of America and the two republics for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
What's that? Oh. Roll call, please.
Supervisor Ramos.
Here.
Supervisor Lassio.
Present.
Supervisor Gallagher.
Here.
Chair Cottrell is excused from the meeting today. Vice Chair is Acting Chair Manfree.
Here.
Okay. Now may proceed.
All right. Our next item is the Pet of the Week. So it is my pleasure to introduce Rooney. Let's see if we can locate him and bring him out here so we can all meet him and get to know him. All right. Wow, it's always a good morning to meet a new pet. Can you tell me something about Rooney? What do we need to know about him?
Yeah, so my name is Kelly. This is Rooney. He is a Belgian Malinois mix. He is between two and three years old. He is an absolute charmer. He was found in the Napa city limits with three other dogs, two females and a male puppy. They have been there, well, actually, he has been there since November. The other three have been adopted. I don't know why he's still there. He's absolutely amazing. He went to the community health fair with us on... He went to the community health fair with us on Sunday, and he said hi to everybody. And he was just so sweet and calm, and this is just exactly his demeanor. He does have that energetic side. He loves to play ball, but otherwise, I mean, he's just a cuddle bug, and he just is a social butterfly as well.
All right, well, thank you. Is there anything about families or kids or...?
No. No cats in the household. He does like to chase the cats, so maybe no small animals. And then his adoption fee will be waived for the rest of the week if anybody adopts him this week.
Thank you so much. Yeah. Yeah, and anyone who wants to pet him, highly recommend. Thank you so much. Oh, I know I wanna hang out with you, too. Okay. Moving along, the next item is approval of proclamations and commendations. Today, we have three proclamations to consider. Before we take up our Proclamations for Child Abuse Prevention Month, Public Health Week, and the Week of the Young Child, I would like to ask for any public comment on these proclamations. Seeing none, I will ask my colleagues...
Chair, do you mind? We've got some folks.
Oh, oh, good.
I think this is, I think we normally, well, maybe not, but I know what you've got. Do we do one public comment at a time for per proclamation? Just for procedural?
We, we do comments on the proclamation of invited guests at the time of the presentation of the proclamation. This is for anyone else who is not one of the invited guests to make a public comment.
Thank you for clarifying. Okay, thank you. So anybody here who's, for any of these proclamations, this is your time to come up, other than the people who are gonna be receiving the proclamation?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'll, I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we approve the proclamations.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Bell Yaramos and a second by Supervisor Lassio. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so motion passes unanimously.
Good morning. I'm Tracy Lamb. I'm the Executive Director at News Domestic Violence and Sexual Abuse Services. And I just wanted to make a brief comment regarding the Week of the Young Child and Child Abuse Prevention Month. I just wanted to say that our organization serves about 1,800 people each year, and many of those survivors of domestic violence and survivors of sexual abuse are either children who have seen and witnessed violence at home or who have been victimized. And these children have experienced a lot of what we call ACEs, Adverse Childhood Experiences. And we are just wanting to say that we're so grateful for the safety net of providers who provide safe spaces for children to learn and play in our community, and we appreciate the childcare workers who often provide that sense of stability for children who live with these experiences. We are so fortunate to have organizations like First Five, Community Resources for Children, Cope Family Center, Community Action Napa Valley, and the County Office of Education, and other childcare centers, who are all part of our community that help us raise our children. We're especially concerned for our low-income families who are in need of childcare. For those escaping violence, having affordable childcare is vital to their ability to live independently. It's part of the support that allows them to get a job, to have an apartment, and to be safe, to break the cycle so that kids are not living with adverse childhood experiences and not have those risk factors that can lead to serious health implications for them, for their futures. So we appreciate our providers, and we appreciate you recognizing these proclamations. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Nick Enelsing, representing Workforce Alliance of the North Bay. First, I would like to congratulate the Napa Board of Supervisors for its recognition of the value of childcare and youth in general for the fabric of our community. At the Workforce Alliance of the North Bay, we believe access to quality and affordable childcare is an essential component to support working families and their children. In Napa, many families face challenges to finding available childcare slots, forcing them to make difficult choices regarding their employment and early education. The cost of childcare has a higher share of household income in Napa County relative to other medium U.S. counties. For these medium U.S. counties, on average, the median yearly price for infant-based center care in 2022 was $11,354, which is about 13.9% of the family income. By comparison, Napa County families paid a median $18,909, a 17.3% share of their income. And that cost has likely risen since then, which impacts citizens and their participation in the workforce. This reality has made the region unaffordable for our workforce and is viewed as a contributing factor towards the decreasing population in Napa. The latest figures show that the population has decreased by 5,560 the past five years and is projected to decrease by another 5,189 over the course of the next five years. To be clear, a decreasing labor force and population poses a threat to Napa County's economic vitality. The Workforce Alliance of the North Bay supports initiatives that provide access to childcare in our Napa community, and increased access to childcare programs has been demonstrated to improve school readiness, social-emotional development, future academic success, and contribute towards the decreased cost for our working families. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Enelsing.
Good morning. I'm Erica Lubinski. I'm the Executive Director of Community Resources for Children and also a member of the Child Abuse Prevention Council. CRC has been working in Napa County for 47 years, and every, every year, we serve 4,700 individuals. I'm not gonna repeat what my colleagues and peers already said, but I do wanna emphasize that our deepest gratitude. We have 136 childcare sites in Napa County that includes the public and the private sector. And on behalf of all those providers and all those educators, I wanna express my deepest gratitudes for this proclamation and for recognizing the Week of the Young Child. As mentioned, childcare is not only a necessity for working parents, but is really a pillar to a thriving society, and we need more childcare in our community. I moved to Napa almost 10 years ago, and since I came, we've been saying that we have a childcare deficit, that only one in every four children have a licenses law. That statistics has not changed in the last 10 years. We have changed the infant slots. It used to be one in 10, now it's one in nine, but it still is one in nine. We still advise moms who are thinking about getting pregnant to get on the waiting list for infant care, and we need to fix that. And fixing that is gonna, is gonna require a collaboration between the public sector and the private sector, such as you kindly have done over the past years. And we look forward to continuing our collaboration to support our, our children and our families and our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments from people who are here at the meeting? Any comments on the phone? No? Okay. Then I'm going to go ahead and close public comment and move on to the presentation of the proclamations. And these are gonna be taken out of the order. They're listed on the agenda, so the one that's, item A, will be the last one we do. So we'll go through this order, Public Health Week, Week of the Young Child, and then Child Abuse Prevention Month. And we'll each, I'll be presenting Public Health Week, Liz Lassio will be presenting Week of the Young Child, and Joel Gallagher will be presenting Child Abuse Prevention Month. Sorry, I'd like to invite Dr. Christine Wu to join me at the podium for, for the first item. All right. So whereas 2025 marks the 30th anniversary of National Public Health Week, and whereas the theme for National Public Health Week in 2025 is "It Starts Here." And whereas highlighting all areas of public health, priority areas of National Public Health Week 2025 are individual and community health, climate action, health equity, advocacy, and strengthening the public health workforce. And whereas public health professionals help communities prevent, prepare for, mitigate, and recover from the impact of a full range of health threats, including disease, outbreaks, natural disasters such as wildfires, flooding, and severe storms and other disasters, including disasters caused by human activity and public health emergencies. And whereas public health professionals collaborate with partners outside of the health and human services sector, including city planners, transportation officials, education officials, and private sector businesses, recognizing that other sectors can influence health outcomes. And whereas in communities across the United States, individuals are changing the way that they care for their health by building healthy relationships and connections locally, regionally, and across the country. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that this Board of Supervisors, County of Napa, State of California, on this 8th day of April, does hereby proclaim the Week of April 7th through April 13th, 2025, as Public Health Week in Napa County. We call upon all members of the community to observe this week by helping our families, friends, neighbors, coworkers, and leaders to better understand that we can make our communities healthier, safer, and stronger when we support and stay engaged with one another. So I'd like to invite you, Dr. Wu, to say a few words.
Thank you.
And congratulations.
Thank you so... You're standing there. Thank you so much, Vice Chair Manfree, the Board of Supervisors. I am Dr. Christine Wu. I am the Deputy Director for the Health and Human Services Agency, Public Health Services Division. And as the Health Officer for Napa County, I'm really grateful to have the support of all of the Board of Supervisors in our efforts to protect the health of the community. So as I've said before, you know, public health's goal is to prevent disease, protect and promote the health for all people in all communities, as well as to respond to those health emergencies. We do this through a prevention focus that includes health promotion activities that may target those who are more, more vulnerable in our communities. We provide direct services, such as through our vaccination clinics. We prevent the spread of infectious diseases through our monitoring of over 80-plus Title 17 reportable conditions. We support maternal and child well-being. I'm really excited that, you know, we get to share this week with the other two, you know, child and welfares, Child Week, I'm sorry, I don't have the names in front of me, as well as providing services directly, need, specific to our local communities' needs, including addressing the behavioral health needs that were identified as a priority in our community health assessment. So public health prioritizes health at every level, ensuring that every one of us has the opportunity to live our life to the fullest. And public health is a shared responsibility that starts with actions that each one of us can do, and is strongest when we have strong partnerships. And since I've been here in my role at Napa County, I've been really impressed with the close collaborations that we have within our agency, across our departments, county departments, but especially with our community nonprofits, many of which are represented here, not for public health, for some reason. Okay, good. Thank you. So, you know, National Public Health Week is actually a time for our community to come together, get to know our health department, the services that we offer, and have fun doing so. Now, we started this week on Sunday with our Community Health Fair, which is the epitome of public health. And hopefully, you all had a chance to stop by, but if not, we're gonna have, have it again next year. This is the second year that we joined forces with our Office of Emergency Services. We had over 300 participants and the highest level of engagement since I've been here. And I think that's because we had a raffle for every participant who completes a passport that indicated they went and visited each one of the 55 booths from our programs, various departments, as well as our community-based organizations. And 11 of which were from emergency services organizations. So, you know, it was, I, I hope you got the chance to go, because I, some of us got to see the incredible heartwarming smiles on the children's faces and the families as they walked away with bags full of fresh fruit, supplies, or maybe one of the 18 raffle prizes. So it was really, you know, a really great day. We also offered over a dozen, sorry, we also provided over a dozen vaccinations, as well as health assessments and other services from our partners. We, we have bigger plans for next year. So hopefully, if you didn't get to go this year, that you'll get to go next year. So public health matters because it connects all of us. The theme, as Supervisor Manfree stated this year, is "It Starts Here." And our mission is your health, and there are, and it starts with actions that each one of us can take. Wearing a bike helmet, learning hands-only CPR, volunteering with a local nonprofit, getting to know your neighbor, you know, making our parks more accessible and inclusive, and advocating for public health investments, whether that's financially or for professional development of our staff. Each one of these actions will have an impact on our community's health. And so I hope each one of us in this room, online, or whoever watches this recording, will join me in this effort to make our community a stronger, more resilient, and healthier community. So thank you so much for this proclamation. I actually have a couple of flyers, posters, that I hope that we can put up on the front entrances of our buildings. Okay. Should we take a picture?
Dr. Wu, I just wanted to say thank you so much for the health fair. It was wonderful to see everyone, and especially for having your vaccination clinic. That is so, so important right now as we're seeing what's happening across the country. And thank you for being such a strong advocate for vaccinations and for being out there with your team all the time, making sure that we're taking care of the community. Thanks.
I think because there's gonna be three proclamations. Let's do pictures at the end so that we get up once.
Okay. All right.
All right. So next, I would like to invite Supervisor Lassio to present Week of the, the Week of the Young Child proclamation to Ashley Walker of First Five and Erica Lubinski of Community Resources for Children. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. I'm very grateful that the Board Chair and staff are supporting this proclamation by the Board of Supervisors, Week of the Young Child. And I want to thank Ashley Walker, Executive Director of First Five, and Erica Lubinski, Executive Director of Community Resources for Children, for the work you do day in and day out, and for being here today to receive this. Thank you for being champions in our community. Proclamation, Board of Supervisors, Napa County, California. Week of the Young Child, April 5th through 11th, 2025. Whereas every year, thanks to great work of the National Association for the Education of Young Children and that of their affiliate agencies, jurisdictions across the nation, dedicate a week in April to celebrating young children, their families, and caregivers through themed days and host of activities. And whereas NAEYC, which is what I shared before, the National Association of Education of Young Children, NAEYC, is a professional membership organization that works to promote high-quality early learning for all young children, birth through age eight, by connecting early childhood practice, policy, and research. They work to advance a diverse and dynamic early childhood profession and support all care for, for, educate, and work on behalf of young children. And whereas First Five, Napa County, Community Resources for Children, It Takes a Valley, Child Care and Development, Cope, I know is here, Childstar, Inc., Parents Can, along with many other community organizations in conjunction with the National Association for Education of Young Children, are celebrating the 54th anniversary of Week of the Young Child. And whereas, a parallel to NAEYC, these community organizations are working to achieve a collective vision, one that all young children thrive and learn in a society dedicated to ensuring that they reach their fullest potential. And whereas, early childhood educators and others who make a difference in their lives of young children deserve thanks, recognition, and support. And whereas, public policies that support early learning for all young children are crucial to our Napa County families, communities, and the economy. And whereas, high-quality early care and education can help reduce the effects of poverty, detect and remediate delays in identifying and help prevent child neglect, and lead to positive outcomes for individual children, helping them be better prepared for school and more likely to succeed in life. And whereas, this board acknowledges that high-quality early learning and childcare up to age eight is a good public good, is a public good, and should be supported as such. Now there be fore-proclaimed that this Board of Supervisors, County of Napa, State of California, does hereby recognize April 5th through 11th, 2025, as Week of the Young Child in Napa County. We call upon all community members, groups, businesses, organizations, educators of the community to continue to support efforts that increase children and families' access to high-quality early childhood education and care. Additionally, we thank each organization that plays a crucial role in the well-being of our youth and our families in Napa County. So I wanna thank you and congratulate you and for being here. Would you like to say a few words? Wonderful. I'll leave this here. Thank you very much.
Good morning, supervisors and guests. My name is Ashley Walker, and I'm the Executive Director of First Five, Napa County. It is truly an honor to be here today to accept this proclamation on behalf of First Five, Napa County, and the many other community-based organizations that work hard day in and out to make Napa County a place that values and cares for our youngest community members. The first five years of a child's life are critical because they lay the foundation for a child's physical, emotional, social, and cognitive development. The brain develops rapidly during the first five years. Actually, around 80 to 90% of brain development occurs in this period alone. Experiences, both positive and negative, shape how a child's brain is wired. This is why our community is centering the needs of our youngest children is so crucial. It takes a village to raise a child, and we are so grateful that the Board of Supervisors has taken this stance and made this proclamation. This proclamation is a testament to the hard work and dedication of everyone involved, and it highlights the impact we've been able to make in our community so far. It's a proud moment for us, but our work has a long way to go. Childcare shortages coupled with high costs for care, post-pandemic education backsides, and a lack of family-centric activities are just some of the challenges young children and their families face in Napa County. We know that collectively, we can work together and break down systemic barriers that hinder families from being able to thrive. And we are so grateful that our Napa County Board of Supervisors has made this proclamation and is showing their support for the work we have ahead of us. We remain committed to working tirelessly to ensure Napa County is a place all families and providers can put down roots and thrives, and thrive. Once again, thank you to the Board for this recognition. We look forward to continuing to serve and collaborate with the county for many years to come.
Thank you so much, and thank you for presenting. Next, I would like to invite Supervisor Gallagher to present a proclamation for the, a proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month to Sue Sigler and Veronica Piper-Jefferson with Cope interim, Cope and with HHSA, respectively.
Okay. I'm gonna forego the "whereas's," but otherwise, we'll read this. National Child Abuse Prevention Month is recognized throughout the United States during the month of April and serves to highlight the essential role of community cooperation in fostering awareness of child and family well-being and advocating for the implementation of effective strategies to support families and prevent child abuse and neglect. And all adults and caregivers have a responsibility as neighbors, community members, and residents of Napa County to help create a healthy, safe, and nurturing environment for children and youth. And during periods of extreme stress, such as economic challenges and natural disasters, families feel more vulnerable, and as a result, rates of child abuse and neglect increase. These incidences and impacts can be reduced, however, by ensuring families have the support they need to cope and to raise their children in safe and healthy environments. And child abuse is considered to be one of our nation's most serious public health problems, with scientific studies documenting the link between the abuse and neglect of children and youth and a wide range of medical, emotional, psychological, and behavioral disorders. And effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among state and local government agencies, schools, faith groups, community-based organizations, law enforcement agencies, the business community, and dedicated community members. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that this Board of Supervisors, County of Napa, State of California, on this 8th day of April, does hereby recognize April 2025 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Napa County. We urge all community members to increase their participation and efforts to empower parents and nurture children to prevent child abuse, strengthen our community, and raise children who thrive.
Good morning, Vice Chair Manfree and members of the Board. I'm Sue Sigler, Interim Executive Director of Cope Family Center, and I'm here on behalf of the Child Abuse Prevention Council of Napa County. I want to thank you for your commitment to children and families in our community. You've been an important funder and partner to CAPSCY members and in the important work of building strong and supportive community for Napa County's children and families. Again, thank you. Today, I want to highlight key findings from our 2025 report and discuss urgent actions needed to strengthen family stability and prevent child abuse in our community. Napa is at the forefront of a critical shift in child welfare, moving from a system centered on mandated reporting to one that prioritizes community support and prevention led by the Child Abuse Prevention Council of Napa County. And families in our community face significant risks linked to child abuse and neglect, including poverty and related stressors such as food insecurity and housing instability, household trauma such as domestic violence and mental health struggles, natural disasters like earthquakes and wildfires, racism and discrimination, particularly for our BIPOC families, and threats to LGBTQ+ and BIPOC and immigrant children due to harmful policies and rhetoric. In 2024, HHSA received 1,699 reports of suspected maltreatment, and I will turn it over to Veronica Piper-Jefferson to talk more about that data.
Thank you so much, Sue. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you today and for receipt of the proclamation. I did want to give a little context to some of the data that was contained in the very extensive report that you received ahead of this meeting. And just to highlight just a couple of things. One, to thank the many people that are here today that are part of our Child Abuse Prevention Council. It's not only that we can't do the work of child abuse prevention, but we don't do it without the many partners that are in this room and those that are not here in terms of our overall general community of Napa County. As Sue mentioned, we did receive a total of 1,699 reports of suspected child abuse. We continue to trend upward in terms of the number of suspected child abuse reports that we receive, and we continue to also be above the state average in terms of those reports. And what we think about that number and that trending upward, it just really says and speaks volumes about what Napa County is and that we care deeply for children. People pick up the phone without hesitation, and even when they do hesitate, making a suspected child abuse report is actually very anxiety-provoking, and you question, am I going to make things better, or do the family get what they need? Is this the right information? Do I have enough information? Will this help or hurt this family? So to know that we have a community that deeply cares for children, we should take great pride in that. Yet, at the same time that, you know, we receive that number of reports, about 60% of those reports, we actually don't respond to, mostly because the content of those reports aren't reflective of actual - the legal definition of suspected child abuse, which generally means that our community is calling because they're worried, and what the family really needs is not a report, they need support. And what we look like, we have the word "child" in our title, so this is the place to call. What we would like to propose, and we hope, and all of our partners are in agreement around this, is that what kind of supports do families need? You heard some of it today. They need concrete economic supports. They're looking for diapers, they're looking for formula, they're looking for rental assistance, they're looking for affordable housing, they're looking for childcare, they're looking for transportation support, they're looking to meet the basic needs of their families. If we want to keep children safe, we need to support their parents. And so I think that's really important for us, and something that we're committed to at the Child Abuse Prevention Council is coordination of services. We want to make sure families don't have to knock on several doors before they get the right service, the right size service for what they need and the time that they need it. So we have a commitment to figure out, how do we make sure that families can pick up one phone and make one phone call and get what they need as opposed to an investigation? So I just wanted to highlight some of those stats and where we are right now. If you have any questions, we are definitely open to receiving those, but thank you again today, and thank you so much to our partners that are here in the audience. Appreciate you.
Chair, can we do a round of applause for all three proclamations?
Yes, absolutely. And thanks to all of you for your incredibly valuable work for this community. I'd like to invite the Supervisors and the recipients of the proclamations up for photographs.
And I'm going to take this time to do a little PSA for CRC. They are having an event to honor and, you know, highlight childcare providers on Thursday evening, so talk to Erica. It's really, really important. We know that quality childcare does help to prevent adverse childhood experiences, so please be there if you can.
I think everyone should join, and it should be one picture if I'm going to -
There was definitely a common theme.
There was a theme. Hi.
Can we also hold up the national public health flag?
I'll take the flag.
Child care coalition?
No.
Everyone.
This is all interconnected.
and there is nothing on the agenda for this item, so I'm going to move on to the consent calendar. It's number six on the agenda, 6A through 6AB, and I would like to note that items 6W and 6Y have been dropped from the consent calendar, so we will not take any discussion on these items. Do we have any board comments or items to pull off of the consent calendar today?
Yeah.
Coming in.
Coming in.
Coming here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No? Okay, I'm not hearing anything, so I will, at this time, open this up for public comment for anything that is still on the consent calendar. I will remind people that public comments are limited to three minutes. So is there anyone in the room who wishes to speak on any items on the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, is there anyone on the phone? There. Okay, so we have no one in the room, no one on the phone, and I'm going to go ahead and request a motion and a second to vote on the consent calendar items 6A through 6B minus 6W and 6Y, which have been dropped.
So moved, Ramos. Second, Gallagher.
Okay, so we have a First by Supervisor Ramos and a Second by Supervisor Gallagher. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, so we're moving on now to item number seven on the agenda, which is public comment for any items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the room who would like to make a comment on any item not on the agenda today? Uh, yeah, please step forward to the podium. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Arthur Russo. I'm here as the current foreperson of the Napa County Civil Grand Jury. We've decided this year to try to bring more public awareness to what the grand jury does and to have more focus perhaps on the reporting that we produce so that the public is more aware of the things that we are looking at. We have a report out now that was released just a couple weeks ago, which has to do with bond financing for the Napa Valley Unified School District. And I'd like to take a couple of minutes to read what our findings were, and also to encourage people to go to the Court, Napa County Superior Court website and look at the entire report. It's out there in English and Spanish. So we spent seven months looking at this particular issue, and we came up with six findings. And those findings were briefly that bond financing is a primary source of funding for addressing the capital needs of Napa Valley Unified School District, that the NVUSD website is complex to navigate, making it difficult to find bond financing data, that charging NVUSD employees' salary against bond funds, although it is permissible in some circumstances, may reduce public trust by contradicting public pledges that the bond ballot language, N bond ballot language, which states, "No funds for administrators", that NVUSD does not adequately inform the general public, that the Citizen Board Oversight Committee play a critical role in satisfying the California's Proposition 39, which requires that school boards have the oversight committee for bond financing, that the NVUSD Citizen Board Oversight Committee lacks a thorough and independent training, and that the creation-and-execution of the Unified School District's 2016 to 2025 Facility Master Plan had only limited participation. We also have a commendation in our report for the oversight committees and the work that they have done. There are several recommendations that are made in support of these findings, and again, I would recommend that - it's a 16-page report, so it's a relatively quick read for people to go to the website and read it. I would read recommendations into the record this morning, but I have seven seconds left, so that's going to be difficult to do. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. Are there any other public comments in the room? Okay, are there any - anyone waiting on the phone? Okay, all right, then I'm going to go ahead and close public comment and move on to Board of Supervisors' reports and announcements. Is there - would any of my colleagues like to make any reports or announcements? All right, Liz Alessio, you want to go ahead?
Sure, thank you. Well, this has to do with, again, infant of the young child, and there's been a lot of work happening here, and it truly does intersect with public health and child abuse and child neglect prevention efforts and creating those safe spaces for working families to place their infants and their children. I want to thank, you know, our public health, of course, and those agencies that are here today. I also want to thank a local group, but there's a - I don't recall if I mentioned this last time, but there's a relatively new community-founded coalition that supports - it's supporting infant and childcare access that's affordable, and there's probably about 35 different members to that, that really is a great cross-section of this community, from community-based organizations to foundations, local foundations, local and former electeds. I want to thank Supervisor Gallagher for being on this with me, neighbors, community members, and the business community, including Workforce Alliance of North Bay. Thank you for your comments and being here, Nick. I also want to thank - well, let me say this, there's three different tasks for this coalition. One is creating community education and awareness, and Week of the Young Child and these other proclamations definitely help with that, and you will see some more information coming out from this group. The other charge is to look at current policies and legislation in terms of creating equitable access that's actually feasible. It's very expensive to open any business, including an infant and childcare business, which is news to me, and I think that we can do better, and, you know, working with CEO and talking to him about some ideas of how we can approach that and talking to this group. I am happy and proud to share that we did submit a legislative request. I want to thank my board, A. Victoria Noblock, Andrew Meis, who's a staff person, and Haly Kramer, who were here, and that helped with that, to make sure that that got submitted. It was submitted to Senator Cobaldon's office and upon request, in addition to Majority Leader, Assemblywoman Cecilia Agar-Carry, as a way to look at legislation for not just the County of Napa, but this is a statewide issue. And then also fundraising group. We've got a childcare provider here who has more than exhausted any feasible resources to be able to open up a new childcare facility that will include 100 spaces, and that this board gave her a grant to do so, including a state grant. In addition, as we talked about, you know, as a primary pathway for families, working families to live here, they need affordable infant and childcare along with that affordable housing, so also raising funds for scholarships and subsidies for families that need it. So I also, last but not least, I want to thank our CEO, Ryan Alsop. Not only he's been a partner with me in terms of brainstorming and what can we do and ideas, because I'm new in my position, so really appreciate his guidance, his mentorship here, and being willing to step in and spend an entire day with somebody, a childcare provider, to make this available for her to be able to move forward and offer these 100 spaces. And really, that was a 12-hour day that you blocked out, and that's a big, big ask, and it's truly extraordinary, and I thank you for that. So I will just end with that. It's been very busy the last couple weeks since our last time we've met, but I think that's enough of my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Alessio. Are there any other board updates? No? Okay, well, I'll have just a few to read here. So I was recently honored to represent Napa County at the North Bay Watershed Association, and we received - last Friday, we received updates on the Golden Muscle Invasion, which is happening in the Sacramento-San Joaquin Delta right now, and also on the progress of the Bay Water Trail, which is a wonderful resource where you can take small watercraft from one launch point to another all around the San Francisco Bay. And there was a couple who recently circumnavigated the entirety of the San Francisco Bay, which I thought was just remarkable, and they're using the information they gained to improve the Bay Trail, the Bay Water Trail going forward. I also had the opportunity to attend the Sheriff's Citizens Academy, which is a program that runs once a year, and citizens are invited to go and learn more about how the Sheriff's Office operates, and it was very informative and actually very fun, so I'd absolutely recommend it to anyone who has an interest in learning more about how our sheriffs operate. And also of note, I was the - I served as the alternate for the Bay Conservation and Development Commission this past week. They're working on the Bay Adapt Implementation Plan and the Regional Shoreline Adaptation Plan, and they're offering technical assistance for staff and public representatives generally who want to better understand shoreline adaptation, so there is an open invitation to contact the staff working on those plans to learn more about them and the resources that are available to planners. That's it. Okay, and so we have no discussion for items pulled from the consent calendars, item nine, because nothing was pulled, and no administrative items for special districts. Let's see, we are now at item 11A, which is to appoint four directors from the following seven applicants to serve on the Napa County Resource Conservation District Board of Directors in lieu of holding an election, and the applicants were Karen Bauer-Turgeonis - am I saying that right? Sorry if I'm not. Jennifer Putnam, Reiner Honigke, Jim Lincoln, Allison Day, Patrick Gorman, and Paul Asmath. Thank you to everyone for applying to the Resource Conservation District for the open positions. Clerk of the Board, would you like to?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Yes, this is as forward as the board letter has stated. The Napa County Resource Conservation District met as an independent special district that's managed by a board of directors who served specific terms of office. These terms expired. We opened the recruitment and received the applications from the people you see listed there. The RCD met -
for the Bay Conservation and Development Commission this past week. They're working on the Bay Adapt Implementation Plan and the Regional Shoreline Adaptation Plan, and they're offering technical assistance for staff and public representatives generally who want to better understand shoreline adaptation. So there is an open invitation to contact, to contact the staff working on those plans to learn more about them and the resources that are available to planners. That's it. Okay, and so we have no discussion for items pulled from the consent calendars, item nine, because nothing was pulled, and no administrative items for special districts. Let's see, we are now at item 11A, which is to appoint four directors from the following seven applicants to serve on the Napa County Resource Conservation District Board of Directors in lieu of holding an election. And the applicants were Karen Bauer Tijanas, am I saying that right? Sorry if I'm not. Jennifer Putnam, Reiner Honigke, Jim Lincoln, Allison Day, Patrick Gorman, and Paul Asmath. Thank you to everyone for applying to the Resource Conservation District for the open positions. Clerk of the Board, would you like to?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Yes, this is as forward as the board letter has stated. The Napa County Resource Conservation District met as an independent special district that's managed by a Board of Directors who served specific terms of office. These terms expired. We opened the recruitment and received the applications from the people you see listed there. The RCD met in an ad hoc meeting, and they have requested this board accept the recommendation to reappoint Karen Bauer Tijanas and Paul Asmath and appoint Jennifer Putnam and Allison Day to serve on the RCD Board of Directors for a term expiring on November 27, 2028.
Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment on this item from anyone in the room? Would you please approach the podium if there is? I don't see anyone. Is there anyone on the phone? No? Okay, is there anyone on the board who would like to make any comments?
Chair, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we appoint Karen Bauer Tijanas and Paul Asmath and appoint Jennifer Putnam and Allison Day to the Resource Conservation District in lieu of an election.
I'm happy to second. I just wanted to make a comment thanking everyone who applied, thanking the people who are, who sought reelection but are not being reelected. Thank you so much for all your years of service. And I did want to say, Allison Day is a friend slash colleague, and congratulations to her. And Jennifer Putnam is a District 1 resident, and I just wanted to say congratulations to her as well and to thank everybody again for applying, but I'll second the motion.
Okay, thank you. If I could operate my microphone. So first by Supervisor Ramos and a second by Supervisor Gallagher. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes unanimously. All right. Item 12 is special districts, and we have nothing on the agenda there. So we are moving on to item 13, item 13A, which is to open and move to continue the public hearing to consider an appeal filed by Apple and Water out of California concerning the Napa County Planning Commission's decision on December 18, 2024 to adopt the prepared mitigated negative declaration and approve the new winery use permit number P-22-00002-UP, submitted by Barbara Meyer. So at this time, we're just continuing this item. I will open the public hearing and invite any member of the public to comment on the continuance only. Is there anyone who wishes to comment? Is there anyone on the phone? No? Okay. Any board comments? No? Okay. May I please have a motion and a second to continue the hearing to May 6, 2025, at 9:00 a.m., as requested?
I'll make a motion to continue as noticed in the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Ramos, second by Supervisor Alessio. All those in favor? Aye. Oh, did I miss something? Okay. Okay, so we have no closed session items today, and that concludes our agenda. We will now adjourn this meeting to the next Board of Supervisors' regular meeting on Tuesday, April 22, 2025.